Good evening, folks. It is six o'clock. It is Tuesday, January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. And we are in the council chambers in the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. Um, Colette, we'll start with roll call. Kathy Cobb?
Here.
Jason Arz?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
Todd Casper?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
The first item on our agenda tonight, then, is consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature or previous discussion. If you would like separate discussion, please let me know as I go through. We have the council minutes from December twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three, that's our regular meeting, and from twelve, uh, December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, a special meeting. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report for December. This is the preliminary report. I have no appointments for boards or commissions tonight. We have licenses to approve, one and two-year operator licenses to sell and serve alcohol, as were uh, listed in your packet. Uh, taxi driver perm licenses, as listed. A change of agent for the Class A combination beer and liquor, beer and alcohol license for the Walmart stores. Um, Adam Webster being the new agent, and the premises is at eighteen hundred Progressive Parkway. This is Walmart number nine fifty-eight. We have a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages for Nick's Public House Community Fund at seventy-five North Bonson. That's here in City Hall, the City Hall Auditorium, from four to midnight on Friday, February second, for the Midwest Country Music Festival. And we have a banner permit hanging, uh, pardon me, March fourth to March twenty-fifth for the Platteville Fire Department Annual Pancake Breakfast Fundraiser, which is always on, uh, Palm Sunday, which I believe this year is March twentieth. And, uh, so make sure that you put the pancake breakfast on your schedule and don't rely on the perm, on the banner. All right, so those are the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve the consent agenda as presented. Colette will vote. Cobb?
Yes.
Arz?
Yes.
Parrot? Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, uh, my first item here, we have citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Uh, before we start, I would like to welcome, uh, the Weebleows from, uh, the local, uh, scout troop. Lynn, do you have any introduction you want to make? Uh, Lynn Parrott was, uh, part and parcel to, uh, bringing these young folks and their leaders, uh, to, uh, our our, uh, council chambers tonight. And I heard her, uh, over by the map explaining things, so Lynn?
I just want to thank you guys for coming out. I thank you for, um, trusting me that I knew what I was talking about. Um, I hope that you guys really got something out of this. Um, thank you, Scott, and I thank you, Dr. Khan, for bringing them.
And, uh, you're a little young right now to, to serve on the council, but eventually you could be the person up here, and that would be great, wouldn't it? I think everybody up here would applaud that.
Yes.
All right, um, other than that, under citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, I have one person who has requested to speak. Pardon me, I don't know what's in my throat. On his, uh, First Amendment right, and that would be Kevin Reed. And as, as usual, we limit, uh, limit comments. Thank you. The five minutes.
Mrs. Doss, after my five minutes, I would like an answer to this question. Why is my First Amendment right being denied me? I have a petition of grievance against the city, and I want it heard. Now, when I get done, I want an answer. My name is Kevin Reed, and as you know, I'm village idiot. And since I'm not since I have not been a Democrat for a long time, I don't support, spend, spend, spend Democrats. So I guess I'm the face that Joe Biden is always talking about. The extremist mega Republican. So that's me. I'm extremist. Hey, I, here's a question for you, Mrs. Doss. Would you publicly praise and honor a Platteville firefighter? We had a small power position at UW Platteville, then used his power position to, to, uh, create a hostile work environment for a fellow firefighter, a Christian, me. Would you praise and honor a person like that? That makes, make a workplace hostile? I mean, what did, whatever did the Platteville Fire Department have to do with my employment at UW Platteville? Would you praise and honor Dave Blankamp? Yeah, yes or no?
This is a chance for you to speak to us, not for us to speak to you, so I'd ask you to continue.
All right. Would you publicly praise and honor a Platteville firefighter who consistently drove fire trucks for many years while being intoxicated? Lenny Lonsberg, the man's dead. I would not bring up his name, but you people put it on over in the city park, so I go by, uh, Court TV rules. You brought it up, so that's fair game. I drove on a truck with Lenny Lonsberg to a fire. It was not a pleasant situation, and I've seen Lenny at many other fires, drunk. And I always would say something to both department heads that I served under. Hey, what gives department heads in Platteville the right to wave off laws like drinking and driving? Who, what gives them that right? Nobody. Would you publicly praise and praise and honor a Platteville fire chief who knew of a problem of drinking and driving before being elected chief? This is Bob Lady, because I campaigned against Jack Ryder. We removed him as chief. Bob Lady got in there as chief, and he exacerbated the problem. He did not stop the drinking and driving. He exacerbated it by feeding their addiction. Feeding their addiction. Two cases of Seagram's VO I witnessed in the upstairs of that fire department. And then I also witnessed single bottles of Seagram VO being, uh, well, I didn't witness them being put in the freezer, but they were in the freezer on, uh, beating and drill night. And that's where the liquor came from that was hid all over this fire station, like L. Probst told me. After I came here in nineteen ninety-eight about the drinking and driving. L. Probst, a couple, about a week or so later, before I got skewered at the fire department in a, a bum rush, whatever. He told me about his inspection with, uh, Chief Lady and firefighter Tom Covert. They did an inspection. They found liquor hid all over the place. L. Probst told me that. He told me that. Chief Lady confirmed that the night, the one I, the night when they gave me the bump rush down there. He confirmed that. I asked him, was there an inspection done down here? In which liquor was found hidden over? Yes. He confirmed that in front of the city manager, then L. Probst. Oh, honorable city manager, honorable firefighter, L. Probst. He confirmed that in front of L. Probst and the city attorney, Eric Berlin, Nolan. I, it might not have been Eric Berlin. I can't remember the man's name. I got it on, I got it on one of my documents. So you get, you people got a big problem. You're trying to honor people that were drunks and punks. That's what I call them, drunks and punks. Drunks and punks. Now, is that, that kind of world you want to live in? Do you want your kids and grandkids? Hey, we honor punks and drunks in Platteville. Come on down, come on down, everybody. See the stupid cookie cutter fireman statue in City Park, because we honor punks and drunks. Yeah. Hey, those, those who don't learn from history are doomed to repeat it. Those who cover up evil doing from public view, thereby trying to change history, are duplicitous idiots with small hearts and weak elitist minds. That goes out to you, Kenny. You were on this council when, uh, news from L. Probst and his inspection came here. You guys just covered it up. You, Mike DeLakey, Eileen Nichols. There's that old home enthusiast guy from downtown. There was a realtor, and there was a couple elderly ladies. You people created that cover up. You took it right from L. Probst. You created it. You carried it on for twenty-five years. Did you not ever tell the people here and your council members the truth about what was going on in the fire department? Those who cover up evil doo- doing from public view, thereby trying to change history, are duplicitous idiots with small hearts and weak elitist minds. Yeah, that's you. That's you. That's a lot of you sitting right there.
Okay, Kevin, that is your five minutes for tonight.
I want my answer. Why is my First Amendment right not being heard?
I think your First Amendment right is being heard.
My First Amendment right is not being heard. Barb, I don't, I get more than five minutes for a First Amendment right. Please have your city attorney put it in writing, why my First Amendment. My First Amendment right is not being heard. I want it in writing. People are not getting away with this. Punks and drunks are not to be honored. Never.
Okay. I have no other, um, request to speak at this time. I have a couple of people who have requested to speak on their agenda item when we get to it. Uh, we'll move on.
I have.
Oh, you have, uh, you have, uh, an observation or a comment?
I do have a comment. Um, we haven't been here for a while, but I would like to publicly congratulate Barb and Hap for being recognized as Platteville Citizens of the Year. So congratulations.
Um, I, I guess I do have one other thing that we should, uh, extend our, uh, thanks to our streets department and our parks department. Uh, this, uh, last week was, uh, challenging for a number of reasons, uh, not only the snow, but the cold. And now, uh, today's challenge with all of it melting and refreezing, so, um, you know, I, uh, had the opportunity last week to travel out of Platteville. In fact, to travel to Whitewater and, uh, to Fort Atkinson. And I will tell you that the streets in Platteville were better prepared in the streets in those two communities. So I think you're guys, I mean, I, I know it's not perfect, and I know that there are people who will say, but. But let me tell you, in comparison, you guys did a, an outstanding job, so, uh, thanks to you, thanks to Nick. Uh, Bob, I suspect some of the parks people were involved in shoveling and moving and whatever, so, uh, thanks to all of you. All right, reports in the bo, in the packet tonight, uh, Parks Forestry and Recreation Committee, Jason from August twenty-first.
Nothing to add.
Good grief. Historic Preservation Commission, Ken from September twenty-first.
Well, I'll go back to, um, Parks Forestry. I said I'd bring something up there for Bob.
Oh.
And, um, first of all, is, um, as far as the issue concerning, concerning domestic animals in Harrison Park. And I just was asking what the status is. The, uh, request was to put up signings that said, no dogs allowed. And I believe that's being worked on. And I believe it's now stating no animals allowed. Am I correct on as far as what's, what the status is right now?
The ordinance, uh, is no domestic animals. And that is in, no domestic animals in Harrison Park and City Park. Uh, and the signs reflect, the signs are all made. So in the spring, we'll start a push uh, so that everybody understands the ordinance for those two parks.
So no domestic animals, there'll be larger signs. Because we have, we have two signs that say something about animals ready, but the signage is so small, it's difficult to read. Okay, thank you. And the next thing I have is, um, Jenner Park at the bottom. And I just, I was curious whether this was, uh, was, was, um, correct or typo? So it says, um, the plan is to remove that system and the poles, then add an exterior light and a shelter or have a lion energy add in new pole and have dawn to dusk lighting at Smith Park Inclusive Playground.
Smith Park was, uh?
Is that, is that a typo that you put that in, or is that?
No, that, that is correct. We have, uh, dusted dawn in both Jenner and in the inclusive playground. The lighting is, um, for the playground itself is, turns off. There's security lighting there, but.
So that was my question. Now, going on to, um, Historic Preservation, I don't have any additions for that.
Okay, Commission on Aging, Kathy, uh, November twentieth.
Nothing new to add there.
The Housing Authority Board, Lynn, from November twenty-eighth.
Uh, we were restructuring, uh, contract. No, there's nothing else to add. There's nothing.
Okay. Uh, Police and Fire Commission, Kathy.
Nothing further to add.
Okay, the Library Board, Lynn, from December.
Police and Fire, I have a question.
Police and Fire, we have a question.
Uh, at the Plan Commission, I went to the Plan Commission a while back, and I believe it was Peterson that spoke against the, uh, location as far as the fire station. So, um, I thought that was interesting, because he, he was saying, well, a better location is next to, uh, Medical Associates. So what is the status as far as, um, the Peterson property? Um, far as, uh, whether or not Peterson property is going to be purchased? And let's see, another one, uh, demolition options. Uh, I know there's a listing for options as far as demolition. So could somebody say something about those items?
I would be clamped.
Again, um, yes, as you folks remember, in November, we did pass a resolution, um, declaring necessity uh, to begin with what would be an eminent domain type of process. Um, in talking with our city attorney, there were some documents that need to be prepared, uh, and to engage with that conversation with the property owners. I'm anticipating that I have the documents finalized on February seventh is our anticipated time. And in regards to the demolition efforts, I plan on talking with the facility guidance team on Thursday, um, with, uh, finalizing a RFP for a salvage effort first on OE Gray. Uh, and we're expecting a specification design on the fire facility, I believe, on February sixth?
Seven.
Seven. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Library Board, Lynn, from, uh, December sixth. Water and Sewer, uh, Kathy or Ken? I have nothing to add.
I don't not have any additions to that one.
Community Safe Routes, Jason.
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay. Other reports that were in your packet, the Water and Sewer Financial Report for December, the Airport Financial Report, the CIP Quarterly Status Report. This would have been through, uh, December uh, thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three, so it would be the, for the fourth quarter of the two thousand and twenty-three year. And then Department Progress Reports were in your packet. Uh, I did have a question relative to the CIP Quarterly Status Report. Uh, when you present that, I'd like to see totals at the very bottom. Total, I mean, I could have pulled, I mean, I think though that's a spreadsheet, so if you can pull totals to the bottom, it would show us how much we allocated, how much was spent, and how much wasn't spent. And then some idea of what happens when things aren't spent. I know there were some carryover requests in there, which I don't think we've approved carryovers yet.
That will come in a couple of months.
Right. Okay. Um, Ken?
City, city manager. So on your first page, um, so under accomplishments in December, it says, uh, let discussions on the library conveyance dash completing two initiatives. And, um, my question there is, um, who was involved as far as knowledge about the agreement? What I'm getting at is goals, it says goals for January. Continue working with the library director, facilities manager, and city attorney on the conveyance of the library to the city. So you list there the city attorney, and I, I gave you a, a copy of when the city attorney was hired in two thousand and seven?
Two thousand and seventeen is what it was on the document?
And so I was curious as to there was a listing about six, seven people, and whether that listing is going to be, is changing. Because the night of the uh, meeting that we had, uh, closed session, a person by name of Nelson appeared, and I didn't remember that name on the list. And so I'm curious, they have fifty attorneys. Does that mean that they can list anybody on the, on that list? Because when you go through that list, it shows for those people, what, what that are on the list, it shows what their accomplishments are. So Nelson was on the list, so I'm looking for an update as far as, uh, the people on the list, if that changes. I, they have fifty attorneys, and I'm trying to find out if there are certain ones they're going to use.
I can certainly bring that information forward on the list of the attorneys that are cer, currently with that firm, as well as uh, reviewing that contract and understanding our relationship with Axley and what's important.
And also, it, it, uh, brings to me the point that, uh, when we have a closed session, I like to have as much information as possible about what the closed session is going to be about, and I like to have that information before the meeting. I do not like to go into meetings without information. So if, if you knew it as the Agenda Committee, three people knew it there, and if others people knew it, then I think the whole council should be, uh, to me, allowed to know what's coming up as far as documents for this closed session. So that night, Nelson presented a number of things. And, um, I thought would have been very beneficial to give us handout information, confidential, and so we could bring it, we could read it and bring it to the closed session. So that's my comment. And then, um, on the next page, I, I commend you for giving a report on Jenner Park, so I, I appreciate that that you put that on the, uh, next page. So thank you very much. And then, let's see if there's anything else. Have we gone to, um, Fire Department yet?
Uh, it's just Department Progress Reports.
Yes, I'm looking at Department Progress Report. Um, let's see, who do I have here? Fire Department. It's, it's, it's Public Library, and she's not here. There's this one section on their library news under, um, the first part, the last paragraph, that, uh, the Wisconsin Senate is reviewing two proposed bills, SB five-nine-eight, SB five-nine-seven. And then, uh, later in the reading there, it says that under Wisconsin statute forty-three point three-zero parentheses for parents of children under sixteen may currently request borrowing information for their children through different ILS options at their local public libraries. So do I take that as this is a statement against these two bills which are being offered at the present time, I assume?
I can't speak to that effect. I can reach out to, uh, to our director and see if she can clarify and bring that information back to you.
And then, and then some other um, things here under Buildings and Grounds, CIP. It says all floor cleaning equipment has been purchased. So it's to me, you could have added some more on. Does this mean you didn't have any floor cleaning equipment prior to this time? Is it new? Is it replacement?
We got it.
And then also, under that section, CIP, it says including adding a comfort room and several more meeting study rooms. This project this project will require significant fundraising and therefore will not be completed in two thousand and twenty-three. So this is under what, um, you're going to change around some rooms in the library, is what I gather here. And then the last one I have is, is what, uh, is given there in the last paragraph that, um, it says, city manager, city library director, building maintenance manager, and public works director have met with the city attorney and are reviewing drafted legal documents. Now, if you say city attorney, the city attorney could be a number of possibilities, so I'm curious as to who the city attorney was meeting with the people.
In context of library, we were working through Attorney Nelson was our lead on that project. We have several different attorneys through Axley, as well as a different attorney firms that can be counsel for the city, depending on what type of project we do engage with.
Yeah, but you say city attorney, but you don't name the attorney.
And your preferences, you'd like to know exactly which attorney? Okay. We can, we can accommodate that. When we, when we do future reports, we can make sure that we delineate which attorney that you're working for when we reference that.
Yeah, because I'm used to seeing the city attorney, one of them. And then we have half a dozen more, and then are we, am I being told we could pick out of the fifty?
No, I, I
far as anybody else.
I actually think what's happening is they're picking the best out of the fifty who can handle the
That is
project or the
In engaging with a firm versus an individual attorney, then that is the, 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 the point is that you do have access then to attorneys that are specializing in the different, the different sections of case law and, and statute law, so that you have a specialized versus a general type of a council.
But when I go into a meeting such as a closed session, I kind of like to know who this person is, where he fits. What is, what his background is.
Okay, we'll see if we can include names in the future.
Okay, that's what I have for that one. Thank you.
So have we finished Department Progress Reports? Because I'd like to move on to the action items for tonight. So the first of the action items is the local historic designation of Roundtree Stone Cottage. Joe, I'm assuming that's you.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, the Roundtree Stone Cottage is located at four sixty West Madison Street. Uh, the Grant County Historical Society has submitted a uh, request to have that property designated as a local historic site under our, excuse me, our municipal code, chapter twenty-seven, which is our historic preservation ordinance. Um, so that property is already listed on the National Register of Historic Places. It's on the State Register of Historic Places. It operates as a historic site, so it, uh, definitely meets all the criteria uh, to be considered a historic site. Uh, but they submitted basically, uh, I guess to fill in a gap, what they thought that it should also be listed locally, uh, to add some additional protection to the property and to raise some additional awareness about the historic nature of the property. Um, is kind of the reason they submitted this, uh, request. Um, so since it does meet all of the criteria, uh, staff does recommend approval, and the, uh, Historic Preservation Commission also recommends approval. Any questions?
Okay, questions? On the designation, local designation of the Roundtree Stone Cottage as a historic site. Uh, there's no charge for this.
No, there is not. The, really, the only impact, uh, go, uh, going forward would be that if they make any extra year changes to the property beyond general maintenance, it would require approval.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the designation of the property at four sixty West Madison Street as a local historic site.
Second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Lynn to approve the designation of the property at four sixty West Madison Street as a local historic site, something that we all refer to as the Roundtree Stone Cottage. Colette will vote. Cobb?
Yes.
Arz?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper? Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the second item for action tonight is a budget amendment allocation of sergeant's compensation compression issues. And I believe this will be Clint.
Yes, Clint is here to eat crow and to sheepishly confess that when we went through the salary. Uh, discussion back during the budgeting process, it was specifically requested by perhaps one of your council members to make sure that there was space in there. Oversight down my end and through my peoples was that we were looking at numbers and space did exist. What we failed to recognize though is that we do have pay modifiers in our. Union negotiation. So we had situations now that have raised where we have some of our officers uh, that are senior and ranked in tenure. If they're getting a pay modifier of acting as an OIC, an officer in charge. In absence of a sergeant, then they're in fact making a higher compensation rate. Uh, than their sergeant would be had they been there, which. Certainly doesn't feel like it's equitable types of conversations. So. Uh, I'm here to ask for a a uh, authority to do a budget transfer and in transferring from the city manager's contingency line. To the police department line uh, for wages in the amount of thirteen thousand three hundred and forty one dollars. With the solution, we're also uh, adding compensation language to the policy that kind of fixes this going forward. By ensuring that our more junior uh, sergeants are making at least five percent more than the. Top tier tenured officer that could be uh, also OIC and that our senior. Sergeants are making seven percent more. So it will kind of bump and move along with a a union uh, type of a an agreement. Uh, but what we did approve with the wage it, those wage bands by resolution. The wages that they would fall into still fall within that band. So we don't have to do any type of a resolution or compensation policy amendment as adopted. But I do need your permission to do a fund transfer and enact that.
Questions? Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve the budget amendment with a transfer of thirteen thousand three hundred and forty one dollar. Manager contingency to account one hundred dash five two one zero zero. Ages for the purposes of an increased allocation of the police sergeant wages to.
Second it.
Okay, we have the motion by Kathy and a second by Lynn to approve this budget amendment transferring money. From the city manager contingency fund to police wages. Collette will vote. Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, that ends the uh, action items on our agenda tonight. We'll move on to information and discussion items. Uh, for the uh, young people who are here, we discuss at one meeting and the next meeting we vote on. So. If you come back next time, you'll hear us vote on these very things. But anyway, thank you for coming tonight and uh, yeah, good.
I want to thank them. Also for coming. And I want to thank also um, Scott White. Do I have the right name? Yes.
Scott's here for another thing.
Another thing. Well. I want to tell something about Scott White. In nineteen sixty seven, I was in Temple, Texas with my family and Scott White is the name of a hospital in Temple, Texas. And we've talked about that before.
Okay. Not sure. Okay. Let's move on then to.
It may still, it may still be open.
Move on to information and discussion items then. First of all, we have ordinances to amend the official traffic map regarding. Pro parking on East Mineral Street and a second uh, ordinance on Mitchell Avenue. So Howard.
Okay, thank you.
One at a time.
Yes. Uh, first East Mineral Street. This is uh, uh. Uh, by uh, Jenner Towers and Jenner Tower Park. Um. Uh, as we've discussed previously, the city has decided not to install a crosswalk at this time. However, to improve in in visibility. In that area, it was suggested to eliminate. Parking stalls on the north and south sides of East Mineral Street. On north side, we would eliminate two stalls. Between the current yellow curb by the park and the driveway opening where the community garden is located. Uh, we would put no parking between signs. I have actual footages based on uh, conversations with. City Attorney Cole. Uh, that that would be the. That that would be the preference for uh, for doing that. On the south side, it would eliminate two stalls. Between the yellow curb at the driveway, under the canopy. Down to the fire department connection uh, for for the building. Uh, with those driveways, the proposed solution would be a no parking here at a corner. Uh, by the electrical transformer east of the fire department connection. Uh, and it's approximately a hundred sixty five feet up to the corner. Uh, we would absorb those signs. And I have. Photos with the proposed locations.
Okay, questions of council?
So how many parking stalls are we talking?
Four total, two on each side.
Um, I see that uh, I see that you sent a letter to uh, the property owner.
That is correct, and I hand delivered a copy to the manager. Uh, of that facility.
And was there any response from either?
Um. They were said, they were basically saying it will create some. Some additional issues uh, with people who are trying to uh, uh. Pick up and drop off and for uh, and for um. The residents and the and the staff, but he said that. Staff can park in that uh, parking lot by the VFW. Because they have permission to park in some of those stalls up there. Um. So I I didn't feel that there was any specific. Comment at that time.
Kathy, do you have addition? Anybody else?
What? So refresh me, what is the logistics behind? Why would we do the side of the street where that the house is the, I guess that's the north side? Why are we going back that far? On the north side of the street? Why does it? Why are we adding those additional two spots?
I've been asked to improve the visibility. Um. For uh, anyone. Who. Needs to be visible at that location. Um. And so that's what I'm attempting to do. Um.
Yes, I'm I'm just questioning why do we? Have to do. Right, there is a concern about pickup and drop off because that hap. Is it not possible to consider?
On each side.
One on each side. I mean, this is all, I mean, part of a, I hate to say trial, but. We're hoping that this will alleviate some issues.
That that is a possibility. Um. At fifteen miles per hour, um. The site distance required for someone to come to a full complete stop going uphill at that location. Is over a hundred and fifty feet, which is more than these two parking stalls. I thought that this was a a reasonable compromise. Um, so that. As people are are. Traveling up the hill, if they see. Someone that they need to. Avoid or whatever, that's fine. But if the council direction is to reduce this to one, we can certainly. Amend this and bring it back that way.
Yes, I have a question um, in response to your questions, because if people were parked there permanently, wouldn't that? Proof to be more of a hindrance to pick up and drop off than having no parking where someone could just swing in, drop someone off. And go on. Because if if it is no parking, I'm assuming people could do that. You could just pull over.
So my my immediate, my concern is that especially on that side of the street, um. Personally, that is where I would use to, if I visit my father, because the um. The you can't park in their lot, um, if you don't live there, right in the front. And on the side where they do have, they not, they really never have any place to park. So I know if it's a concern of mine, I would just imagine, like, it's not like heavily used. And I I was just trying to see like, where we have um, an issue, like whether an accident's over there or like. How did that come to where we need four spot? I'm just asking, I'm just asking. I mean, I could I could shuffle myself around and figure out, I just don't go visit my father, but I'm just saying. But I'm just saying, if it's my concern simply, I know that there are other people who, when they visit their family members. They they use the spot. At first I thought about the neighbors that were here, but I think they. Park on the front, so I don't think that's their issue. But I know I definitely, we had him a party and we had, we had those two spots because there's no other place to park. So I'm just, I that was just my concern. Like, if we're gonna take away these that are right at the building, I could see that for the visibility. But if there hasn't been any rec recorded incidents that would make this like a danger or hazard. Why we'll be inconvenienced other resident.
I was just gonna say, you know, we started this conversation out here a couple of months ago. Where someone or people wanted, uh, some people wanted. Some sort of marked crossing that was going to cost us in some neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars. We make some sort of compromise, which I think Howard has here by saying, okay, if people are afraid of crossing the street or have concerns. Of vehicles. Coming up the street and their inability to cross the street, our next step is to remove the vehicles from the street and open up a a a field of observation. For both. So here we set, we're taking away parking spots to open up that observation. So people can safely cross if that's what the concern is. But we go back also to this age old discussion. That I think we've had for the last twenty or thirty years that I've been involved in it, and that is. Perhaps the pedestrian needs to watch for the car. Versus worrying about a car observing a pedestrian. I ask who is has most to lose while crossing the street? The pedestrian. So it's a real basic, basic question of how we're going to train people. Uh, you know, I tell my kids to watch out for cars. I don't tell them to cross the street and hope the semi stops. Okay, it's it's something very basic. So, you know, take away all the cars you want on the street. And these people are still gonna have to watch out for their cars moving on the street. So I don't know where you want to go with that, but thank you, Howard, for at least coming up with some sort of solution for. This three month uh, discussion, I guess, on some people crossing into the park. Thank you. That's it. I'll be.
And I I would like to raise the the issue again. Or traffic traveling the wrong way on mineral. I personally have never seen that. And how? But I'd like to know how big of a. Issue is that because. Um, I appreciate the fact that you highlighted in your letter, Howard. To the property owner to encourage them to um, paint the arrows. So is it people coming out of there that are going the wrong way down or are?
I I honestly do not know. Um.
I I guess we should ask the chief.
It was an anecdotal. Uh, it was anecdotal information from residents of Jenner Towers. Uh, I'm not aware of any stops or anything, but.
It's more anecdotal than anything, although I can say that. Where my office is situated across the street. I see a lot of people going the wrong way on mineral, but. The vast majority of them realize their error before they get down to Oak Street.
Right. I I've seen people turn into uh, Mineral Street by the by City Hall.
Yes.
And and then they're like, oh, this is not good.
And you'll.
I I am now not going the right way.
You get a lot of them coming up the wrong way on Forest Street and then they. Exacerbate the problem and turn on the mineral as well the wrong way, but. Normally they realize their error by second or third screen.
I'm sorry, sir. You cannot speak from uh, the audience. If you would like to speak on this, you can fill out a green sheet and bring it forward. And we can let you speak. So it's not that you cannot speak. It's just that our our protocol. With recording and uh, broadcasting is you need to be at a podium or at a microphone if you want to speak. Okay. I know.
I have a question.
Okay, uh, Ken?
For Lynn, um. Are you picking up your father and then going someplace with him? In the car?
Uh, you mean when I park there? Or.
When you pick up your father?
Right.
Are you going someplace in your car? With him? So you're leaving the area of the.
Arsenal, but yeah, I am. I do pick him up and take him someplace.
Okay, so you could all, you could actually come through. From Oak Street down through and park right in front of the entrance to the building.
Right, that I do that when I pick him up, but when I visit, when I when I'm gonna visit him.
Oh, when you want to visit?
Right, we I park right here because we normally visit in the little visit room that's downstairs.
Okay, folks.
Yeah.
Uh, we can, we can talk all night about uh, specific and individual situation. The question in front of us is an ordinance amendment that would remove four parking. Spots on East Mineral Street, uh, two on the north side of the street and two on the south side of the street. Um, uh, Howard has drafted a ordinance that would uh, modification that would allow that. Personally, I think one on each side is enough, but uh, that's my personal idea. So I, if if anybody else has any ideas.
I I also want to thank you, Howard, for coming up with a solution. Um. But I I guess I would like, I'm concerned about losing parking. Spots in that entire downtown area. Um. So I guess I I would prefer to see one. Spot on each side of the street.
Got to look at it a few times and I've seen. Plenty of free. Um, and again, also you had mentioned a hundred and fifty feet for the the speed. I think it was a hundred and fifty feet. But would one, would one parking spot? Enough to satisfy like state requirements for?
No, but. We've been talking about. Um. Improvements, not necessarily, not necessarily to full standards. I mean, right now people cross. When there's parking there right now and as someone recently said, the pedestrian has to watch out for the car.
The other. Point that I'd like to make is that I, if that. Allow the the four spaces to on each side. We have a lot of that same situation on Main Street. With cars parking close to the intersections and I myself. Dread crossing Main Street because of visibility. And so maybe if we. What are we saying if we're going to do this? Eliminate four spaces for.
Apartment.
One apartment building. apartment, one apartment building? What if other businesses say that, well, I'm on the corner and I hear complaints that people can't, see around the corner when they come to cross. Are we, are we setting a precedent that, you know, because it, it is an issue on Main Street. It's, it's in, in to Todd's comment, it, it is up to the pedestrians, crossing the street.
Okay, I, I don't know where we stand, uh. I guess we'll find out that next week and it'll come back to us with uh, as it is, uh, with two parking stalls eliminated on both the north and the south sides of um, East Mineral Street. Let's go on then to the next agenda item. Next uh, is amending permit parking restrictions on Mitchell Avenue. And Tom, did you have a, yeah, I, I'll need that. So uh, Howard?
Okay, uh, back in two thousand twelve, uh, city addressed concerns regarding the Roundtree Commons construction, with limited parking stalls. Uh, it was decided that streets within a half mile of Roundtree Commons would be restricted to permit parking only. Uh, most streets were permit parking only. Others were listed as two hour parking, uh, daily or permit parking. Uh, Mitchell Hall, Mitchell Avenue was designated for the latter. Staff believes the streets that were designated for two hour parking were identified as those areas close, uh, for public or visitors as opposed to areas of mostly rental housing with limited, need for additional public parking. Um, during this past fall and winter, some our community service officers were enforcing parking regulations and, um, residents were being ticketed, ticketed for violating the two hour time limit despite having city permits. Um, and residents at that point thought that the two hour restriction should be removed. At this point, we have basically, uh, two different options. One is amend the wording on the signs to make it clear that it is a two hour restriction or city permit parking or amend the ordinance to eliminate the two hour restriction and I, I, I don't have a preference on that. It's based on what the, what the residents at the time want. Uh, I have some, what I would consider some pros and cons. But uh, you know, that, that's uh, that's up to you folks after you consider what the uh, what the citizens want.
Okay, so Howard, are you saying that until this year, uh, the uh, the, it was enforced as two hour parking or city permits? I mean.
I believe so. I, I'm not aware.
All right.
Of any problems prior to this, but.
And I think Tom Kaywood is here. He has not asked to speak, but he has asked to register in front of, I, register, uh, Tom and uh, his neighbor to the east, I believe. Uh, Hamilton, uh, Jim and Julie Hamilton were all of a sudden ticketed this year, after many years of parking there, but all of a sudden were ticketed and made contact. So, um, I think you just want it to be like it was. Uh, you may come to the podium and speak.
That the two hour uh, limit was primarily on Bailey Street to allow some of the residents to have access for, you know, did not have the winner permit. And so that was our understanding. That was long, uh, uh, Bailey Street, but Mitchell Street. I, I, I don't see the need for two hour parking there because there's only, parking on one side of the street. On that, so. And we're talking about maybe three blocks. And if you check, it's ninety-five percent of people park there are residents on that street.
So you would like it to say a city permit parking only?
Well, I don't mind set two hours or, you know, because if people want to visit someone, they still wanna be able to park without calling. And bothering Doug about, well, you know, we're gonna be here for a couple of hours.
Okay, so you would like it to say.
Either or, or just two hours or.
Either two hour restriction or a city parking permit?
Yes.
Okay.
Kind of, kind of the way I took the signs to start with, I thought.
Yeah, that's kind of what we, yeah, and that's how they had been interpreted.
It says two hour parking from yada, yada time to yada, yada time.
And then it says.
State permit.
Yeah.
But so I think the officers interpreted, it says two hour parking.
Right.
And so that's, they were enforcing the two hour parking for people that had the permit. So.
Right.
I think or would be less expensive than either or.
All right, so will uh, the, the preferred option then that I'm hearing from the neighborhood, uh, those people who were uh, affected is, uh, two hour restriction or city permit parking. Just make it clear.
I guess if you got rid of the other under this sign here that says two hour parking, six AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, city permit parking, or I'm sorry, city permit all times instead of all other times. You get rid of the other, so you go around Howard and scratch other off each sign and we're good.
All right.
Get a summer intern. Yeah, white out, there you go.
Thank you, Tom, and uh, this will be on for action at the next meeting. And it appears, Howard, that the preference here is amending the wording on the signs to make it clear that it's a two hour restriction or city permit parking.
Just quick clarification, this, this wasn't part of the um, neighborhood that had concerns about, um, people parking that were working at.
It's right close to that. So we were, Bailey is, Bailey is here, Mitchell is here. So it's, it's, uh, ninety degrees to that road.
Okay.
Mitchell by the Roundtree?
Uh, Mitchell uh, goes on the uh, south side of Roundtree House, on the south side. Right.
I think it ends at Roundtree. There's that Roundtree parking lot that's kind of on one side of the street.
And I, and I think it ends at your, I mean, I think Mitchell is two blocks long.
Yeah, it's two blocks and there are only five, five driveways that go on to it.
Yeah, it's two blocks long. It's not a very, it's not a very long street. Okay, so we have that one though. All right, let's go to the next item on our agenda, which is a request for proposal sixty Ellen Street. Joe?
Yes. Uh, yeah, so the city owns the uh, property at sixty Ellen Street. That was acquired, uh, several years ago in, in anticipation of a potential expansion of the, the fire station at its current location. Uh, since that option is no longer being considered, it's basically property the city no longer needs. Uh, so the council made a decision to do a request for proposals for a potential sale of that property. Um, we received two proposals, uh, which are included in your packet, but uh, just to summarize, the, the stark proposal, uh, would acquire the property, remodel the existing building. First floor would be used for business or uh, potentially residential rental. The second floor would be a residential rental. It was previously a duplex property. Uh, they're proposing a one thousand dollar purchase price. The estimated market value when done would be a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. And estimated completion timeline would be one year. Uh, the other proposal, the Keton Plattville Properties. Uh, this was submitted by the owner of the property next door. They own the fifty Ellen Street, um, property, which is also for sale. Uh, but their proposal would be to take both of those properties, uh, remove both uh, buildings, combine the properties, uh, construct a new two story multifamily apartment building. Uh, the proposal was four to six units, but in reality, a four unit building would fit, six units would not, under our ordinance, six units would not fit on that uh, property. They weren't fully aware of our requirements when they submitted that, but uh, four units would work. Uh, they're proposing a ten thousand dollar purchase price. And the estimated market value when done would probably be in the vicinity of seven hundred thousand dollars. Uh, their estimated completion timeline would be two thousand twenty-six or twenty twenty-six. So obviously, as mentioned, you know, the, the decision had already been made that we wanted to get rid of this property, put it back on tax roll, tax rolls and have somebody, fully utilize it. Uh, the plan commission decided not to make a particular proposal, uh, as far as one of selecting one, but they did say the council should go forward and proceed with selecting a proposal. Um, uh, staff believes that the Keton Plattville Properties would be the most beneficial for the city. Uh, based on the purchase price, the market value of the property when done. Uh, the addition of some additional rent, uh, residential properties, which is a, a need in this community. And I think that, that best uh, fits those needs for the city. So this will be on for consideration in the next meeting.
Your, your comment, um, what number of units did you say would be appropriate here? You have listed here four, six and eight.
Yeah, his, his proposal was four or more, but under our ordinance, four units would fit on that property. More than that would, would not fit.
And when they, if they buy both houses, the fifty, at fifty Ellen and sixty, still four would be appropriate.
Correct. So he, yeah, he, he did mention he, he's trying, but he, he's not uh, uh, come up with a deal yet, but he'd like to also acquire the property further to the south on the corner of, uh, Pine Street and uh, Ellen Street. Which if he gets that, then he could have more units, but that has not been accomplished at this point yet.
He wants to acquire the corner property.
Correct.
Also.
He, he's trying to, he hasn't, he hasn't been able to do that yet, but he's.
So there he might put in six, possibly eight.
Correct. That would be his hope. But at this point, that's not part of the proposal, but he said that's what he's working on.
Okay, any other questions? Uh, go ahead, Kathy?
I'm, I'm, well, I've obviously driven past. City owns this piece of property.
Right.
What did we pay for it?
Oh, we paid fifty, twenty thousand dollars, five, ten.
Was twenty-seven thousand, wasn't it?
City paid fifty-five thousand dollars.
Fifty-five thousand?
How much?
How is it worth looking to sell it for a thousand dollars? Or ten thousand?
Well, first of all, it's been used. I mean, it would, uh, the fire department, you used it for training exercises. So there's probably walls inside that aren't even intact anymore and other.
Okay, but I'm thinking even a lot would be.
More than, more than a thousand dollars.
Put a parking lot in it.
Right. Right.
That number just kind of shocked me. Um, but then with, second proposal, if they would, put multiple housing, multiple, multi-family housing there, I realize, housing, but I'm concerned about the parking. Would, when you say four units, does that include, off-street parking?
Yes, yes. I mean, the, the representative sample floor plan that they included shows actually attached garages, but under our ordinance, they would be required to provide parking.
Street parking. Okay, cause that, it's narrow there.
And it, it, either of these proposals, I asked Joe about this, either of these proposals would require a development agreement. So there would be, uh, I think the council would, since the council went out for a proposal, either one of these, we could set stipulations on. Um, you know, you wanna do this, that's fine. Uh, if you have these two properties, it's four units. And you're gonna provide X number of parking spots on site and you're gonna do this kind of, uh, outside exterior and you're gonna do uh, this kind of landscaping or whatever, in a developer's agreement. And either proposal, Joe tells me, would uh, would lend itself to a developer's agreement. It would also, uh, one of them says, you know, completed by X time. Another one says completed by Y time. Uh, they would be held to that timeline. And in some developer, developers agreements, um, I can remember uh, the one for Park Place and um, uh, up to the north side of town, uh, they said, they said it's gonna be worth so much and generate X number of property taxes. And we said, that's fine. And when it didn't, they've had to pay the extra. So I think uh, we have, we have to think of this in the broad sense that a developer's agreement would be part of this. It's not just, taking a thousand dollars and you can now go do what you want or taking ten thousand and you can now do what you want. It's like.
That makes sense. Yeah, okay. That helps.
What a nice way to get rid of a blighted area and perhaps improve it.
And close to the downtown.
Does fall within the tid?
It does not.
Okay.
I don't think.
Maybe included in there.
It doesn't matter. We're beyond the expenditure period anyway.
Can't. Although it's, it's, it's increased taxes would be helpful.
Seven.
I have a question.
Right.
Okay, Ken?
I wanna get verification. Uh, as far as the fire station people, the house, did you ever use it for rental? No, we never used it for rental. Cause I went by the one time and part of the house was knocked out on the side. So you just use it for training, period. So you had, you didn't produce any income during all those years?
Final question, it's, I, I'm assuming I know the answer, but it is not used by the fire department any longer? Are we going to lose access to that by some, by doing this?
Sure, we'd lose access, but with the new facility, we'd move all those training capabilities into that. So it, it's, makes sense now to move on to probably put it back on the tax roll and move forward.
Okay, if anybody has any additional questions of Joe before the next meeting, uh, the next meeting will schedule this to uh, select a proposal and have Joe uh, move forward with whoever receives that uh, proposal uh, with a developer's agreement. Okay, see on our uh, information discussion, the FEMA AFG grant breathing air compressor bid award. Uh, is this Ryan?
Yes. Okay, so in uh, early two thousand twenty-three, we submitted for a FEMA AFG grant, as we typically do on an annual basis. And we were notified on June thirtieth of uh, twenty twenty-three that the city would be awarded the FEMA AFG grant that we submitted. The total uh, FEMA grant that we received uh, for these two separate projects that we'll talk about here, uh, was four hundred eight thousand, two hundred and two dollars. Um, this grant is a uh, ninety-five, five percent matched um, grant, so the city uh, responsible for five percent of the costs. Um, along with that, uh, we had a CIP project planned with it uh, for replacing these items. So there was, thirty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars allocated through a CIP in twenty twenty-three to cover the city's portion and any potential overage costs with it. So, um, our current, uh, SCBA's are approximately twenty years old. Uh, they have a fifteen year life expectancy. So they're beyond that and many of them now, uh, we cannot have serviced anymore. Um, so the supply is dwindling down, um, and getting to the point where they need to be replaced. So, the biggest, I guess I should say hit for this was, um, so the first one with the breathing air compressor. So we had uh, got bids back when we submitted the grant and we added a little bit to it. Uh, FEMA awarded us forty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars towards that device of which two thousand one hundred, one hundred forty-one dollars was our share. However, the cost, uh, as you can see from the bid sheets, uh, drastically increased over that year time. And the manufacturers or the vendors uh, did not anticipate that. The good thing out of it is the CIP allotment that we have, was we allowed it for a little bit, so it does. was we allowed it for a little bit, so it does cover, um, that additional cost on it. So, uh, from the attached bid sheets, um, a McQueen emergency uh, bid a Arctic air compressor, which is made in Northern Wisconsin, uh, came in at fifty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars, eleven cents. Uh, which was the low bid out of the four that we received. They also included a optional upgrade to enclose the motor of the air compressor. We've been around an air compressor, you know, they're quite loud when they operate. Um, and that would enclose it to reduce the operating cost or the operating sounds of that, uh, when it is functioning. So that came in at twenty-eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for that additional cost. Um, so for us, uh, that cost brings then the city's share for the FEMA cost plus the overage cost plus the upgrade cost um, to seventeen thousand, two hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents out of that thirty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-five dollars. So, uh, we would recommend that, uh, you would award that bid for the breathing air compressor to McQueen Emergency in the amount of fifty-three thousand, one eighty-nine, um, dollars and eleven cents. And then also award the upgrade of twenty-eight hundred seventy-seven dollars for a total of fifty-six thousand, sixty-six dollars and eleven cents. Um, for that. And we can, uh.
An, any questions on that?
I, I, I have one question. Who wrote that grant?
Um, it was a joint. So we use, uh, Steve Brown from Grant County Emergency Management. Works with it, uh, city staff includes some information into it. Um, uh, we, it, you know, we help with it certain parts and, but the, the base grant is written by Grant County Emergency Management, does a lot of work on them. And they're actually, uh, in the process of writing a grant for us for this upcoming year now.
Um, who on a federal level do we need to thank? I mean, to get that kind of a grant?
Uh, yeah, Grant County, Grant County is very successful. Uh, we have not, um, we actually, um, had some outreach from some of our federal representatives that they would be willing to include some letters of recommendation for this year's grants. Um, but any of the federal, uh, legislators, I would just thank them for continuing to support the program as a whole. Uh, it does have an end date potentially coming in a few years and there, we're pushing to have, uh, the federal government extend that program. You know, I mean, if you look at this, uh, there's a lot of the departments that could not afford to upgrade this type of equipment, which is a, a kind of a mission critical. You know, we don't fight fires without these. So.
Well, congratulations on.
Yeah.
Okay, you can go ahead to the, uh, second of these.
Okay, so the second one, uh, is for the actual, uh, breathing air. What they call an SCBA or the self-contained breathing apparatus, that's the pack that they wear on them that allows us to, to breathe in those harsh environments of a fire and go into a structure. So, uh, the, the grant that we submitted was to replace the thirty-nine SCBA's that we currently have. Um, as well, as well as the face mask and then to get sixteen additional face masks so that each firefighter has their own individual face mask that's custom fit to, to them. Um, so we were awarded, uh, three hundred and sixty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars is the portion um, of that overall grant towards the SCBA's. Um, and that's the pack and then two bottles for each of the packs. So we have to have one on it and one spare for each of them. Um, as well as those face pieces. So we began the, the research on the best options that are out there and, um, and that, that were, uh, of the best options and available units to develop our bid specifications. Uh, we had demo units that came in, we let the firefighters try and we, we kinda did, um, some follow-up with neighboring departments that have them. We wanted to see what they're using too. We wanted to have compatibility with our mutual aid partners in our area and, and kinda see what, what's out there because, you know, with the device that you wear to protect your, your life in a fire, um, you know, uh, low bid isn't necessarily the number one factor. Um, especially since the costs were being covered by a, a federal grant, you know, and it wasn't strictly out-of-pocket cost for us. So, uh, after reviewing, uh, the bids that were submitted, um, and comparing the specifications, we found that really only, uh, one, uh, company came in with, uh, a pack that met pretty much a hundred percent of our specs, um, and that was the McQueen or the MSA brand. Um, the Scott Air Packs and the Drager Air Packs had roughly fifteen to twenty exceptions to our specifications. Um, which is something as simple as some of the packs have five different sets of batteries in them to operate them. You know, where MSA has one centralized rechargeable battery that operates the entire pack and all the accessories associated with it. So it makes it easier for us to swap those batteries, maintain those batteries, not worry about. You know, this battery, you know, went out and then it's like, well, we got this battery because it's a backup to that battery. And you know, it becomes complicated when you have to maintain five different batteries in a, in a, in a device and hope that they're working. So, um, after we received them, like I say, we went through, um, and kinda did a little scoring of, of the firefighters' evaluations of those packs plus the specifications, how they matched and and basically came out that the MSAs would be the best value for us here at the city. Um, and they, one of the other key things with them is the electronics in them are so advanced that the local representatives as, um, the federal government or NFPA makes changes and upgrades to them. They can come back and actually reprogram the circuitry in them to meet those modern requirements without having to replace the pack. So it has some future capabilities built into the packs, um, that the other ones don't. Um, so, um, with that said, there are five percent share as well as, um, very minimum overage, uh, cost of it comes out to eighteen thousand, one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and three cents. I think there was there was about, there was actually no overage in the grant amount. There was a eighteen hundred dollar cost for an adapter that goes on the fill station that allows us to fill the bottles without having to unthread a forty-turn cap on them. So, um, we felt that that was beneficial and it fit in with the CIP funds that we have. So, um, the two of them come out to, um, leaving about, uh, just under seventeen hundred dollars in that CIP allotment, um, with you award the, um, McQueen bid for the SCBA's for the Scott or the MSA, um, air packs. So, and that is our recommendation.
Okay, questions? Clint, I only have one question. And that is what, I, I, I mean, this would obviously not being, be awarding low bids. So what kind of documentation is required? I mean, relative to, I mean, I heard Ryan, but in terms of objective.
A, a purchase of materials, uh, and I can, I will double check this with attorney Cole as counsel.
Okay.
Um, but my understanding is in purchasing materials, um, you have the authority to make what purchase that you want. And I believe that it was even put out in the specification that the city retains the right to do that. It's not like if you're doing a construction type of a project where you have pre-certified bidders and you, you know, go through the whole type of thing. So it really comes down to an understanding of, of, um, you know, what's your justification on not taking the lowest bid and being comfortable with that? And as described, we had uh, many of the bullets of the actual specification document were, were not met. Does that answer your question?
I, I just don't want, I don't, I don't want to revisit this in six months from a different angle. I mean, I certainly trust what he said, but I just want to make sure that we have our documentation in order so that we don't have to revisit this. Any other questions? Then let's go on to the next, uh, information and discussion item. This would be a rezoning request for one-ten Market Street and Joe, um.
Yes. Yeah, so the, the property at one-ten Market Street is owned by the First Congregational United Church of Christ, which is located uh, next door at eighty Market Street. So they've been kinda doing some, some planning on their end, looking, uh, to the near future where they may want to sell that property if they no longer fully need that property. Um, so as they're doing their planning, they kinda realized that the existing zoning of that property was going to be a, a limiting factor in their ability to sell that property. It's zoned institutional, which, uh, fits right now. They use it for church offices and meeting space. Um, but if you look at the institutional zoning district that allows churches, schools, government buildings, hospital, university and really not much else. So for somebody else to acquire that property, um, you know, there's going to be a very limited market for them to sell that. So, uh, when we were talking to them, we kinda thought based on that location, uh, the central business transition district would be the most, uh, suitable district for that location, for that property. Um, you know, as the name implies, that's really designed to fit that gap between the downtown area and the surrounding residential uh, properties. So it allows most of the uses that are in the downtown area, but not all. But it also allows the uses that are in the institutional district and it also allows uh, the same uses as the R2 residential, which is nearby. So it gives them the ability to continue to use it in the short term, but also to sell it to, uh, a different buyer, uh, in the long term that would have a, a better ability to use it, probably residential, but it could be office space as well. So, um, as I mentioned, it seems to, that district would fit that location and the pros use. So, uh, staff would recommend approval. And the plant commission considered this and also, uh, recommends approval. So this will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
And Scott White is here and has asked to speak in favor of this. So Scott?
Yeah, my name is Scott White. I'm a treasurer for First Congregational Church and we're just coming to ask for your support to rezone, uh, this location. We're like many churches trying to explore options in the future. And so maybe that we'd sell it, uh, use it for different purposes that would be uh, revenue generating or, uh, other things too. And this would make it a lot more acceptable and easy to do.
Okay, anybody with questions? Okay, if there's no questions, then Scott, at the next meeting, this is a public hearing. So the public hearing comes at the very beginning of the meeting. So we basically, uh, uh, convene, take roll call and have a public hearing. So if you or others would come for the next meeting, it would be much earlier in the meeting. Okay? All right, uh, next ordinance, uh, amendment to the zoning ordinance, section twenty-two sixteen. Again, this is you, Joe.
Yes, so this is a staff proposal, uh, to amend our, our zoning ordinance. Um, section twenty-two sixteen, uh, includes a provision, uh, regarding protest amendments. If somebody proposes a rezoning to their property, strounding property owners, uh, if they oppose to that and they meet certain requirements, they can submit a petition and that forces a three-quarters vote of, of the council order for that to pass. However, the state of Wisconsin just passed a law back in June of twenty twenty-three that uh, basically said a rezoning, uh, shall be approved by a majority vote, period. So they, uh, basically eliminated the ability for a community to, uh, have this, uh, requirement in our ordinance. Um, so this would be bringing our ordinance in compliance with, uh, state law. Um, just an interesting, uh, item though, that this is kind of a part two of the state law when this came about. Uh, this was in our ordinance way back when because it was actually a requirement that we had in our ordinance. So all communities had this back in twenty seventeen, I believe it was. The state proposed a, a, a law change that said you don't have to have it in your ordinance, but they didn't say whether you could have it or not have in our ordinance. So they, I think whoever originally proposed it realized their error and then they came along and said, well, no, you gotta get rid of it completely. So, so we're just trying to come into conformance with, uh, state law. So again, this will be a public hearing at the next meeting.
Okay, questions on, uh, this, uh, proposal that actually brings us into compliance with state law? Okay, then, uh, last item on our information and discussion tonight is the award of contract seven dash twenty-four, street maintenance. And it's not about snowplows.
No, not, not this time. Um, tried to get ahead of the curve a little bit this time. Uh, this is for our overlays that we always do. Um, and so, uh, we, uh, conducted the bid and received a bid. Uh, our base bid would cost, uh, just a little under a hundred and fourth thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, and the budget is a hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're recommending that, that we do the, uh, base bid only. If you look at the map, uh, there's, uh, streets that are in red and those are the ones that are the base bid. The, uh, additional, uh, bids would have been the ones that were in green, but we don't have the funding for that this year.
Okay, questions on this? We are getting an early start on thin overlay. Okay? All right, this then would be on for action at our next meeting. So that's the final item on our information and discussion agenda tonight. Uh, we do have a closed session scheduled tonight per Wisconsin statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent G, for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or likely is likely to become involved. And we have two separate items, one about Walmart's assessment and the second about the Run D Auto driveway. So I would take a motion to go to closed session. I would also say that we would not be making, uh, any, uh, motions or decisions in closed session. So when we adjourn out of closed session, we will adjourn for the evening without action. Um, we will also be, uh, relocating, uh, for this.
We will stay here for the duration. Yep.
Okay, we will not be relocating. I thought we would. So do I have a motion to go to closed session?
Come on.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a second by Jason to go to closed session. Uh, per Wisconsin statute nineteen eight-five, parent one, parent G, Collette will vote. Pop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Motion carries.